We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 31, 2024. It's 7:04. Mr. Rice, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Furman.
Here.
Commissioner Drennanis.
Here.
Commissioner Kettner.
Here.
Commissioner Copeland.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Commissioner Peter.
Here.
Thank you. And I anticipate that Commissioner O'Neill will join us before too long. So, item three, other legislative matters. As we discussed at our last meeting, we have a request from City Council. I will note that City Council has now adopted a new policy in how they send these recommendations to us. They do it by a formal motion, they take a vote, and I believe this was unanimously sent to us by council. And I will just read it. "I would like City Council to act by submitting a formal request to the Planning Commission for them to review our special use permitting requirements for car washes and gas stations. They should consider recommending an expansion of such requirements where they do exist and they do not exist in various, as they do not exist, in various zone districts." And we'll talk about that. "The Commission shall also review or consider additional, adding additional requirements that contemplate the health and environmental impacts of fuel stations and car washes and contemplate the increased use of electric vehicles, such as electric charging station requirements or other areas that the Commission sees fit." On that particular issue, and Mr. Rice, I want to make sure that I'm right about this. One of the assumptions of this is that fueling stations are not special uses in the districts in which they are allowed. Is that the case? They are not a matter of right anywhere, are they?
Not with the amendment to the code that requires them as a special use. Now, you have existing fueling stations that are there, but new ones require special use review.
Okay. And car washes are either a permitted or a limited use in certain districts?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, my thought with the consensus of the Commission is that we're going to do what we did on our previous two requests from City Council. We're going to open it up and ask for testimony on this request. The, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I had reached out to a number of groups who were interested, both those that represent fueling stations and car washes, as well as those that have interest in environmental issues. We will see shortly who has accepted our invitation to come and testify. And I would note that Commissioner O'Neill has joined us. You have missed nothing. As Mr. Rice brings up who has signed in, we'll go ahead and open it up for testimony. Based on the number of folks who have signed up, I'm not inclined to suggest any sort of hard and fast rule on time. And as a reminder to the Commission, we are continuing to try our experiment of allowing more of a dialogue. So, think about questions that you believe these folks commenting may be able to answer that could give us additional information. So, we're actually going to start with Elizabeth Molinar. And if you could, just give us your name, your address, or ward, and tell us what you have to say.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Molinar, and I live in Ward 1. And I am an environmental anthropologist, and I'm here tonight to speak on the environmental impacts of gas stations, so fueling stations and car washes. And I would like to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission, with the recent numbers in decarbonization and the move away, even though gradual, from fossil fuels, that 80% of gas stations are on track to be unprofitable by 2035. So, moreover, gas stations, by their very nature, right, are environmental hazards. Of the 450,000 hazardous brownfield sites in the U.S., the EPA says that about half are contaminated by petroleum, with much of it coming from leaking underground tanks from old gas stations. And it is extremely hard to clean up after removal of a gas station, and rather costly as well. Allowing more gas stations in the city of Lakewood would mean more potential to adding brownfield sites within our actual city boundaries. These hazards aren't limited to tank leaks, though, or after gas stations are no longer in use. While in operation, gas stations and car washes are a source of water contamination via the sewer, but even more so groundwater. Sodium laural sulfates from car detergents end up in our groundwater, and petroleum latches onto clogs and fiber that are in sewers and cause clogs that are really hard and expensive to remove and complicate water treatment. Gas stations pose serious risk to the health of people in nearby homes, businesses, and schools. Gas stations emit dangerous levels of the known carcinogen benzene, sorry for like people who are really, you know, familiar with all the chemicals, ozone, which causes respiratory problems and asthma, and somebody else will speak more on that later. The cumulative cancer risk is exponential, and there's more than the sum of its parts. So, if you think about, for instance, the intersection of like Kipling and Colfax, there's like three new gas stations that were right there. And it's not just like, you know, combined, but it's exponential for people who reside within 43 yards of gas stations. And from an environmental justice perspective, these problems are encountered far more often by lower-income residents and people of color. Gas stations are also sort of a source of sanitation and cheaper food for our unhoused neighbors, and can become hubs for them, exposing them disproportionately to health risks as well. So, I wanted to mention these things and suggest that we would like cap the number of gas stations, or like keep it as is, and not like make it so that we get like more, more of these gas stations in the city of Lakewood. Thank you so much.
Actually, I will have you stay for a moment, if you don't mind.
Sorry.
Thank you, doctor.
I'm not used to that.
Yes. And I would just ask if any commissioners have any questions that they would like to ask. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dr. Molinar, for coming here tonight. Just wondering if you can expound upon a few points you mentioned. First, about water contamination. I've always heard that it is theoretically possible to clean up the water contamination of a gas station. It's just, it's very hard, and it's very expensive. But I've never really heard anything more than those two fuzzy words. And I am inclined to believe that it is very hard and it is very expensive. But I wonder if you know in more specific, you know, exactly how hard? What is the process like? What do you even begin to do?
Yeah. So, we would have to think about like capture, that it would not run off anywhere, right? And so, how gas stations are set up today, that is not happening at all. And yeah, I would love to send you sort of like the process overview of what that would look like from places where like there are stricter regulations. I could send that to like the Commission?
Yeah. So, are there any design elements specifically that a new gas station could be built with that makes the eventual inevitable cleanup of the site easier, somewhat more practical?
In terms of water contamination or overall contamination?
Sure, both. Yeah, water first, and overall, if you have an answer for that as well.
Okay. Because like you couldn't design it so that you don't have runoff, but like the actual cleanup of the whole site is like very, very complicated, because there's like large gas tanks that are in the ground, right?
Right.
So, like removing those is like hazardous process. So, I was thinking something else about your question. Oh, yeah, I was thinking like it's very, very expensive, right? So, we could design it, but it's very expensive. And if we think about like sort of the, how the demand is developing, that it would be too expensive for like what we're actually gaining here.
Right, right. Especially as you say, if, you know, if gas stations are going to be so unprofitable in a decade and a half or so. That makes sense. But yeah, specifically, I guess I'm asking the question, because maybe one thing that is within the power of this Commission to suggest would be, you know, design requirements that go along in the zoning code with a gas station that is allowed somehow. And, you know, if there is a way to, you know, require in the zoning code that, you know, the site has to be designed so that no runoff, you know, of stormwater leaves the site, for instance, that any contamination can get treated somehow. You know, if there's anything you can do specifically with the underground tanks, that is, you know, maybe above and beyond an EPA and CDPHE regulation, which I really don't know a lot about what those regulations even are, but if there's anything above and beyond that to make the eventual removal and disposal of them safely and in a way that's not going to lead to as much contamination, you know, more practical, a little bit less costly for the next person who comes along and redevelops the site, you know, things like that, potentially maybe a zoning code could address. So, you know, any specific ideas of how we even begin to write that?
Not right now, but I would love to think about that, yeah.
Okay. Great. And, let's see, I had, I had another question. You had a very specific statistic, 43 yards of, within 43 yards of gas stations, you said, there's a cumulative cancer risk increase. I was fishing around for some studies in preparation for tonight online and found some similar data, two different studies, that pointed to a cancer risk within a different radius. I wonder if you have a source for that, and any other context? Just because 43 yards is such a particular number. And I'll tell you, before you answer this question, too, the reason I'm asking about this is another thing that certainly within the power of something a zoning code could do is require like some sort of setback distance between gas stations and our residents.
Yeah, so 43, so that's like really specific. The study that this number comes from is actually a European study, and it's actually 40 meters. That's why it ended up with 43 yards. But I can definitely send you the reference, the paper that it comes from. And yeah, setbacks is always like very interesting. I think like within the city of Lakewood, all the gas stations are like very, very close to, you know, the living spaces and the places where we recreate and worship and all that. So, but yeah, I will forward you where I got my number from.
All right. That would be most helpful to me. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Furman.
Sort of along those same lines. I had a question regarding, you discussed a knowledge of more stringent requirements in other municipalities, other places. If you happen to have those as well, it'd be interesting to see, because without having it in front of me, I don't actually know what the, what our current either zoning or code requirements are for gas stations or car washes as it pertains to storm versus sanitary sewer and sand oil interceptors and all those sort of things you can imagine that they might be required to do today. But I don't, it would be good to have this as a point of reference against what we currently have for how they divert it from storm to sanitary, so.
All right, yeah. I'd be glad to send it over.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rice, I don't know if you had anything in response to Commissioner Furman's question or not. If you don't, that's fine.
Related to storm and sanitary? Off the top of my head, as we, I'm thinking of this from site plan review, and I don't know that the city of Lakewood has any additional standards or regulations specific to a fueling station. I know there are some standards that they comply with, with the state related to the installation of the tanks and so forth. But from a stormwater and a sanitary sewer, I think they comply with the standards. I was going to do a quick look, but off the top of my head, I don't believe there's any additional regulations beyond what the state requires.
Thank you. Mr. Priester. Same drill, name, address, and or ward, and give us your thoughts.
It's Neil Priester. I'm from Ward 1. I'm here in part because of my affiliation with Clean Energy Lakewood. We were, we are primarily focused ourselves on emissions and sustainability, but that does dovetail with these issues. Regarding your question, Mr. Buckley and Mr. Furman, I know that there are some, there's some opportunities you double, to set up double tanks in gas, underground gas tanks. I don't know if that's a common practice, but I know that those are going to be a lot more, much less susceptible to leakage due to corrosion. And I don't know whether there's opportunities to do any data mining for emissions around those tanks. I mean, these are volatile organic compounds, and they're measurable. So, if there could be an opportunity for that, that, the concern, the problem is that often those leaks, you don't know about until after the damage is done. So, the goal would be to find that information in advance, so that you don't deal with capture, but rather you deal with detection. Again, I don't, I'm not an expert in those things. I just, but I've got a couple of different surveys here, studies that I had one copy of, and just pass it on to you, sorry, but hope you might be able to share those. The first one is from Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of these points here. It says here that spilling a shot glass of gasoline produces same organic follow compounds, VOCs, as driving a car 56 miles. So, again, the goal should be to capture that before it gets out into the environment. I think that's always prudent. But the first speaker here talked about benzene. There's others. I wanted to touch on the primary, because again, she mentioned that, Elizabeth mentioned that these effects are cumulative. And when you're seeing multiple exposure sources, you're increasing the risk outs exponentially. So, not only is there benzene, but there's also tylenine, there's MTBE, which is an additive, there's others. But those all bring with them carcinogenic risks or cancer risks. And they are relative to exposures such that the employees that work in these filling stations are going to have higher exposure risks than the general public. The second one I have here is from the San Diego Air Pollution Control District, and their study had to, had to do with whether infrared photography could be used as a measurement tool to determine those emissions at the pump. And they found out that they were actually very effective. They mentioned here that the onboard fueling recovery systems, vehicle recovery systems, which every vehicle has, it's those canisters, that in spite of those, there is still commonly emissions from start of fill cycle right to the end. So, there is, those are marginally effective in their ability to capture that. And so, and this one's talking about not only benzene and tylenine, but xylans and hexanes, but these are hydrocarbons. And we do know that we have ozone alerts in Colorado. That's because those hydrocarbons start interacting with UV and cause ozone issues. So, again, cumulatively, one gas station may not make a big effect on this, but we know that there's, in the environment, there is a large overall effect. And that's, that's what we're trying to consider. Maybe we want to consider is, it's just one, but it's one of many, and they all add up. So, this report from San Diego Air Pollution Control District has a lot of facts and figures and formulas and such, but ultimately what they're talking about is the, the emissions are based on the amount of fuel processed. There's, there's a correlation there. So, the more, the more flow through, the more emissions. And it's not just the, at the pump, where it's filled to the car, but it's through the piping systems, the tanks, while the underground tanks are being filled, every, every stage of that process produces emissions. And finally, then there's one from Department of Environmental Health from the School of, let's see, sorry, bear with me here, Columbia University in New York. These other two are from California, and obviously they've got the biggest problems. So, I think they're relative, they're, they're, they're violent, violent, phew, they're relevant. I mean, they're talking about the carb standards. We've all heard about those. Those are, those are typically developed in California before they're rolled out to the U.S. So, they are, they are trying to tackle this issue. But so again, this is talking about how they are monitoring these at the pump, and there is essentially no time at which those emissions are expelled. You touch gas, you're going to deal with it. So, I mean, there's, there's good stuff there. Sorry to be so. I mean, there's just, I'm not a scientist. I can't read those formulas, and there's a lot of numbers, but they all point to the same general thing is that we're not messing with benign stuff.
Right.
As a general aside, on the LAC, we're looking at emissions within the home, which is benzene, and many of these methane-based VOCs, which are different than the gasoline-based, some of them, they all contain benzene. And the goal that we're trying to do there is look at not capturing that, but avoid the exposure in the first place, avoid being in the home. In this case, the smarter part of money is to avoid the production of that. Now, this is not even talking about the downstream, that once you convert that to CO2, now you've got a whole nother problem. This is just at the, at the source. So, you probably would like to hear more about land use and best use. I don't have a whole lot on that. I think emissions is enough for me. But I might add that best use of these resources in this property might not be going toward an asset that's going to be outdated before it even goes in, or stranded asset shortly down the road. Surely, there's a better way to use those resources. And they're, they're going to be private resources, but they're also going to be community resources. And when you drill out from the microscopic, which is what these studies are about, to the macroscopic, again, it doesn't get any better. These are cumulative effects, and the worst thing is that this then is converted to CO2, which is a whole nother animal, equally as urgent, possibly more so. So, there's problems up and down the whole vertical integration of this product.
Something you said really did strike me as a potential land use question, which Something you said really did strike me as a potential land use question, which is what we see increasingly are these fuel stations that have a gazillion pumps because they want to be able to process as many cars as possible at the same time. If in fact the emissions are happening at each of those stages, the more pumps, presumably there's more off gassing, is that, would that be fair to say?
Does this particular project have multiple pumps? I don't know if it's a big, big project.
Well, no, I was, in terms of regulating gas stations or fueling stations, would there be an argument for saying that X number of pumps should be the limit because every additional pump increases the possibility of off gassing? I don't know if that's reasonable or not.
It's going to be roughly, it's going to be roughly the same per gallon, whether it's one, one station or another.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's an issue of demand. We're assuming they've done their work and there's a demand for this product out there so they, they can justify their cost. But if you don't limit it here, it's going to be an exposure or emissions from somewhere else. Again, it points to that the smarter money is possibly on regulation and limiting the, the damage rather than trying to capture that after the fact. How do you, how do you lessen demand? There's a comment online about, about promoting bicycle uses and other alternative sources of, you know, I mean, it's a big problem.
Other commissioner questions?
So, I'm sorry, Kipps has the only version of these. If you are interested in sharing them, but there, there is good data. There's pretty granular stuff, mostly about emissions, which is again, our issue with, with, with resiliency and sustainability.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And Chair Kolkmaier.
Yes.
After the meeting, if you provide those to me, I can scan them and provide them to the commission.
Mr. Hunter, I don't know if you're here on this one or another matter, but please come on up.
Yes, so I'm Danny Hunter, Ward 1. I'm a meteorologist by trade. I'm also a member of Clean Energy Lakewood. Elizabeth and Neil covered most of the concerns that I was going to bring up, so I don't, I'm not going to keep you guys too busy up here. A piggybacking on the 80% of gas stations that are on track to be unprofitable by 2035, there's another statistic I read that was, the average cost of remediating a gas station is $243,000. So you talk about, you know, something that's a bad investment they have to deal with later, and then it costs an additional $250,000. You know, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. As renewables and clean energy are doing this, why would you consider new gas stations as an investment? Of course, I'm sure there's more to it. And they also mentioned a lot of the environmental risks. One additional one I want to go further on, as a meteorologist who sees Denver's ozone problems in the summer, as we're all very familiar with, and the emissions that you have at the pump, you know, if you have more and more, more and more gas stations on top of what we already have, right? I mean, go a mile in any direction, you can find one, right? Yeah, so those are my main concerns. Sorry to bring a matter of opinion into this. I think they're ugly. They're not the most pleasant thing to look at when you go in and around a city. Yeah, that's about, that's about all I have to add here.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Furman.
Were you saying something about the emissions having an impact, the ozone having a particular impact? I guess I, I might have misunderstood.
Yeah.
The impact of the ozone.
Yeah, so like, you know, again, you have emissions at the pump, when you, you can take it in and out of your car, excess gas that leaks or whatnot, that creates hydrocarbons that interact with sunlight, you get ozone, and because of the geography of northeast Colorado, that ozone gets trapped, and that's why we have issues, you know, so often during the summer. So, yeah, therefore lowering the source of those hydrocarbons and those, and that ozone would, would definitely help mitigate that problem. Anything else?
Commissioner, a gribbling of us.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was just wondering if you might be able to give us a little more information about why 80% of gas stations are on track to be unprofitable. I didn't write down the year, but by that year.
2035, yeah. I read a little bit more into that. I'm trying to remember. This was like a couple of weeks ago. No, I can't, I can't give any more details on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I only have one question. When's it going to snow next?
This weekend.
Terrific.
Probably Saturday, sometime on Saturday. It's a little far out to nail out the specific timing, but.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Edelman, I think you signed in, but maybe.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. I believe those are the only folks who have signed up on this particular issue, so we'll close the public comments section on that and begin a discussion among commissioners. So the request we have is to make recommendations regarding potentially additional environmental limitation, or environmental, additional restrictions on fueling stations and car washes under the zoning code. And I guess I'd suggest we start on fueling stations. Several of us may have done some research themselves and want to share information with the commission, and I would invite that. Commissioner Kettner.
Just a point of order first, and I think you just said it at the end. Did you want proposals at this point for changes, or could, do we just ask questions first? I, I have, I have a staff question, I guess, first.
Certainly, go ahead and ask it.
Or a commission question, if somebody on commission knows the answer. The point was brought up about the spillage, and I believe there are different types of pump mechanisms, and there are some that are better, that have less spillage. Do we, it doesn't seem to me, based on my travels, that we have the, or require the least spillage version of those. Does anybody know?
We don't.
So we do not require the best one for lack of spillage. Would that be something that we could require, Mr. Rice, through zoning, or would that be like building code?
It's an interesting question. Zoning deals with land use and, and design, so if you wanted to get into that detail, there might be a way to do it, but it, it might be better handled through the building code or some piece of environmental legislation that, that kind of goes beyond that.
So then kind of back to the point of order, I think I would be interested in making a motion, and I think that I would be surprised if it didn't have some success for some kind of a regulation along those lines. However, I don't have the proper language, I feel like, for that. So are we planning to be all done with this tonight, or have an opportunity to come up with more specific language in the future?
Yeah, great question, and it's my suggestion, and of course, it's always the will of the commission, what you'd like to do, but my suggestion would be that like the two previous ones, we really discuss what ideas we think should maybe be in a draft, and then we'll prepare that, make that publicly available, so it can be further refined and added to and amended and whatnot. But I guess I was hoping that we could at least get some concepts out on the table.
Right. Obviously, yeah, thank you. That helps.
Great. What, oh, Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I have a staff question too, partly inspired by some things Commissioner Kettner said. So clearly zoning is going to affect new gas stations going in. Is there anything that the zoning ordinance can do to regulate gas stations that already exist? Or if the city of Lakewood wanted to tighten up rules to, you know, reduce some of this pollution of, you know, hydrocarbons and spills and leaks and so forth for something that's already there, would that necessarily have to be some sort of piece of environmental legislation that falls outside the zoning code?
The, so you, you have an existing condition. So unless you created the piece of legislation that retroactively applied to everything that's existing, the, the standard that would be created wouldn't apply to, to existing conditions.
Right. That's, that's how zoning works. So yeah, so basically we, the, the changes this commission has authority to suggest would be limited to new projects. Is that your interpretation?
Correct.
Okay. But I suppose, you know, if, if there's consensus, we could always, you know, just make a resolution that we suggest maybe environmental legislation that can go further than zoning has the competency to go could be considered, but we're not the body to consider that. That would be a thing that council would, that's option pursue.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I had a question first. Do we know how many gas stations are currently in Lakewood?
I, I don't have that number.
Okay, because one of the suggestions was to cap and limit where we're at right now, and I guess I'd be interested in understanding how many we have in total, and maybe a little bit about the distribution, if any of that information's available. Thank you.
And, and I would love that too. A reminder though, that because these are council requests, staff is, this is not something staff has brought to us, so we are again on our own in terms of asking for additional work from staff. So that is, that's one of our challenges on these city council recommendations, that we, if it's something, I, what I have suggested to Mr. Rice is if it's something that you have handy, that's already been worked up and you can provide it to us, or it's in your head, fantastic, but we're not at liberty to request a significant amount of staff time on, on these, unfortunately. Commissioner Kettner.
Well, for the flow, I'll follow up first on Commissioner Peters. Maybe we could just do an open records, would that be something simply available though through an open records request, would just be a printout of all the fueling stations in the city, and maybe not map it? Would that be at least something easy?
So from an open records standpoint, I think that would go to the Environmental Services Division, Pat Matthews. I don't know if I, I have that correct. So she may have some record about a list of fueling stations, but I'm, I'm not familiar with that. And then opens records request that would be creating new information, so the GIS department would have to go through, most likely use the Jefferson County records to look for that specific land use. And depending on how Jefferson County classified that, right? So most of these fueling stations have a convenience store. It could be a retail classification and not a.
So, so we don't have a quick li, I was just trying to get, does the city have a quick list of them, even if not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then back to the point about the, what Commissioner Buckley was saying, and the, the fueling station at Alameda and Garrison recently removed all of its pumps and replaced them all. Wouldn't that be the type of a condition where we could require the new things then, even though they didn't have to come back for another special use permit?
Right, and that's where I was, you know, I, I pulled up the, the standards that we have for fueling stations currently. So the, the zoning primarily focuses on the, the site, right? So you've got buildings and they go on the site. When you get to the building or the pump, right, so I'm, I'm going to use buildings because I can talk to that a little easier. So if you want to start regulating the doorway, right, so the doorway opens inward or outward, or it's designed to a certain way so that it can't swing out over the public way, that's a, that's a whole different piece. So that's like the fuel pump, right? That is more applicable at a permitting stage. Planning could do a review, but then the, the, the standards apply at, they're not necessarily the site design, it's at, you know, replacement of the pumps. But you could retro, you could apply, again, new, so, and limit to the extent of what they're doing, and they're replacing those, they have to upgrade certain things.
Yeah, because we do require upgrades when people replace things like that. So if they're replacing it, even the current ones could be subject to it.
I guess, an easy example to understand is you're replacing a roof. You're.
And, well, and to the commission, because I think this is more of a gray area than the doorway and things, and if, if we feel that it can't be in zoning, I don't think there's anything to stop us from making a recommendation to city council that they change the building code around it. So that is maybe something we can consider if we don't feel like it can go into the zoning. I think that is it on the fuel leakage. Thank you.
Well, so it seems like, and this is consistent, what we heard today is consistent with what I have read, that the dangers from the off gassing of hydrocarbons has a direct and provable causal relationship to cancer. It's a health effect, which is absolutely within our wheelhouse, and some notion of prohibiting any fueling station within a, a certain distance of a residential district, for instance, would I think be a logical additional restriction. So I guess I'd like to put that out on the table as, as potentially having a prohibition on a fueling station being located within a certain distance, and then we'll have to discuss what that appropriate distance might be. But that seems to me to be kind of the most direct route, and I guess I would be curious if other commissioners think, I mean, obviously residents, we know there are people there, but people also go to office buildings and go to many other places, shopping centers and whatnot. Should there be some distance requirement to any other use? Basically isolating what's happening on that site from a, a certain distance from where people will regularly be. Obviously, the people who go to the gas station will have whatever exposure they have. But I don't know if there are thoughts on that, but I would, Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a thought. You know, certainly one thing that we can regulate is what zones gas stations are possible in. And just right now, I'm looking at the use table on my laptop here. Fuel stations are a special use permit in the mixed-use neighborhood, in mixed-use general zone, and also in the commercial, regional, and commercial limited zones. So I, I think kind of an idea that goes along with some sort of setback requirement between a residence and a gas station would just be what, what else do these zones do? Like, we know that the commercial, regional, and commercial limited are just commercial uses, but the mixed-use zones that gas stations are allowed in could also contain residences. They could even contain residences that aren't built yet, you know, a, a lot next door that has the same zoning, you know, may develop into residential one day, and then if it goes next to an existing gas station, or a, a gas station that's new and coming along as well, then, you know, it, it could be a way where something new develops and skirts any distance setback that we might wish to add to the zoning code. So I would suggest for the commission's consideration that we just strike fueling stations as a special use in the mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use general zone, just, they're not allowed there.
Commissioner Kettner.
Commissioner Buckley pretty much made my point. As far as putting a distance from a residential district, well, basically all of our zone districts allow residences, so that's pretty much taking them out, which is what Commissioner Buckley just proposed. I have to think about that, because as much as I cannot anticipate actually ever approving a special use permit, I'm not as familiar with wards four and five as I am one, two. And I hate to totally take that option out, and I guess I would especially want to hear from those ward representatives where perhaps they feel, you know, they are not as inundated as we are up in the north area. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I too had a similar thought. I think it's a good one, Commissioner Buckley, that it, it, it might make sense to. Buckley, that it might make sense to further limit the districts in which they're allowed. Other thoughts? Did anyone like to put on that, on fueling stations before we, oh, I guess I would throw out, and this, I think in some respects is related to the environmental issue, but it was an issue in our last case having to do with 1,000 foot. The current provision says you're prohibited to put a fueling station within 1,000 feet of another fueling station, except where the traffic conditions would justify it. And we did not find that that was the case in that application, so that one was denied. But I'm really wondering about, with the concentration and the exponential effect of having multiple stations near each other, if there should simply be a prohibition by distance regardless of whether there was a traffic condition or not. So that is something I would like us to consider as well, perhaps recommending that you just cannot put a fueling station within 1,000 feet of another fueling station. Commissioner Kettner?
Yes, that was also one of the proposals that I wrote down. I would absolutely be in favor of that.
Any other thoughts on fueling stations? Commissioner Gurbelionis?
Thank you, Chair. A question for staff. I just wanted to confirm whether or not my understanding is correct, that any fueling station that would be built in Lakewood would be required to follow the 2021 International Fire Code requirements?
You're putting me on the spot. Maybe the, it's kind of a building code, and I don't know what.
Okay, if, a little more background on that is that 2021 IFC is what Lakewood has adopted. Chapter 23 of that document is the motor fuel dispensing facilities and repair garages section. So, yeah, I mean, to be honest, I'm not, well, first in fuel station design, but there are a few interesting sections within the IFC that seem like there's an attempt made to monitor the brownfield potential of fueling stations. And maybe the question that I guess eventually would come out of my mouth, we'll be able to answer, but maybe not, it might be more city operations related. But, so specifically, there's a section in the 2021 IFC, section 2306.2.1.1, inventory control for underground tanks. And, you know, the basic gist of it is that daily inventory records shall be maintained and reconciled for these underground storage tanks. So I just have to believe that if fueling stations are required to be designed under this code, and these records are indeed being captured, that we should be able to get ahead of potential fuel leaks that are happening to, I mean, maybe completely eliminate the potential brownfield implications of these fuel tanks. So this is a long-winded way of getting towards, like, I just, I don't know, who keeps track of these records? Who's monitoring them within the city? And what, does anything need to be done to better keep tabs on this?
For which there may not be an answer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kettner? Did you have your light on again, or?
Yes, I think I did. You said other fueling station items?
Yes.
Right? Take out one for exception. Oh, I just want to make two points. One of them is sort of related to convenience stores. One of them is about the fewer pumps. You know, again, I can't ever imagine approving one of these or voting in favor of one of these. However, I think something we have to keep in mind, there was a comment online a couple of times about eliminating parking for businesses and being concerned about parking. And actually, fewer pumps, and I think somebody mentioned it, fewer pumps don't equate to fewer fill-ups. And if we have fewer pumps, it could equate to more people sitting there and idling. And if we don't have adequate parking for our businesses, it can equate to people driving around more finding places to park or just not frequenting our businesses. So those are some of the things to consider, and that was sort of a point to one of the comments online, which also mentioned regulating the market with this. And I just kind of wanted to mention that, yeah, when we regulate land and land use, we are somewhat regulating the market. Our latest housing study said we need more primary jobs and good jobs for people, and we need healthy food too. I want to piggyback on what Dr. Elizabeth said about these fueling stations come with convenience stores. And not only for unhoused populations, but other at-risk populations, and many children who I teach have shorter life expectancies because that's where they're getting their food. So when we say no to something like we did with a couple of weeks ago, it's a land use decision. It is absolutely also somewhat regulating the market, but it's saving that land also for a use that will be in the better health and safety and welfare, I believe, of our community than a fueling station would have been at that location. So just to address that point online about, yes, we are somewhat controlling the market with that. And those were all my comments about the gas stations. Thank you.
Thanks. I would also throw out, and I don't know that this is for these particular recommendations, it might be more for the comprehensive plan, but this is a fascinating land use issue, right? It equates to horses and stables, right? A century ago, every block had a stable on it because horses were the main form of transportation. All those stables are gone. So in terms of planning, how do we plan for a day when there will be no fossil fuel-based gas stations? And I think the big questions that we have to think about are, what is the model for land use development for that? Is it that we think that these locations should continue to be some sort of a fueling station, maybe with a convenience store? Or do we think that fueling stations for like electric vehicles should be, would be better to be dispersed rather than concentrated in certain locations? That's a really big land use question. It's a planning question. It's one I hope we grapple with in the comprehensive plan. Because we need a plan that's going to lay out what happens to all of these gas stations. Are they going to be replaced by centralized fueling stations along the same model that we have? Or are they a use that we should be planning to get rid of completely as we seek to have diffused, diffused refueling? So I don't have anything to suggest on that now, but it is something that I would ask folks to think about. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I have something to suggest on that. I drive a vehicle that needs to be plugged in, and I think we need both dispersed and we need centralized. We're going to need both, similar to how we're going to need energy in the future, dispersed and centralized as well in renewable resources. So in particular, it's very convenient that I'm able to plug my vehicle into any 120-volt outlet. Anything, nothing special, any outlet, that's very important wherever I'm at. So that's the dispersed piece. I travel a lot, as folks know, between states, and I need places to charge in along the way. And so those centralized stations are very important along some of those major routes. So I would offer that we definitely need both.
And I appreciate that. And I guess I'm, just a follow-up question for you. It occurs to me, as we've, we heard from our last applicant, that they said they were going to put a couple of Level 2 chargers in. Would it not be appropriate under land use to require that any fueling station, regardless of the type of fuel, would have a certain number, certain capabilities of electric charging?
I would certainly support that. And Level 2 is the standard. Not all vehicles have that Level 3, the fast charging capability. My vehicle does, however, I can only use it twice a year, or it voids the warranty because it strains the batteries. So I actually, in four, five years, have never used it. So, never needed to.
Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Yeah, I had some similar thoughts. I absolutely agree with everything that Commissioner Peters just said. We need both models of fueling electric vehicles, you know, dispersed and centralized. I have a household where we have one electric vehicle and one gasoline-powered vehicle too. So we're using both kinds of fueling, right? The old dirty polluting gasoline and the less polluting electric car. And yeah, similar to Commissioner Peters, in my experience, I've not used a DC fast charging station yet. I haven't needed to. But certainly people do go long-distance road trips with EVs. People still have long-distance travel needs. And, you know, in certain contexts, like a long major highway corridors, you know, zoning for areas right off of, you know, a highway exit, somewhere close to Sixth Avenue, somewhere close to I-70 in our city, could be appropriate for, you know, land use that specifically plans for DC fast charging stations. I asked a question of the applicant when we were here two weeks ago, of, you know, why would you not include a Level 3 charger at the gas station? And as we know, the typical gas station experience from the point of view of a driver is you drive there in a pretty short amount of time, you put gas in your car and you're on your way. Electric vehicles can be like that too, with Level 3 DC fast charging. But Level 2 charging can still take a few hours to recharge a car completely. And so Level 2 chargers are, you know, better required at locations where people are going to go anyway, you know, certainly multifamily residences, commercial shopping areas, where you're going to spend an hour or two shopping or eating at a restaurant or something. Great place for a Level 2 charger, which takes a while to put some juice in your vehicle. You know, something like a gas station, you know, the future of that along like the main travel arteries, you know, through our city that are regional roads, you know, like US 6 or I-70. That's where I would feel like, yeah, it would be intelligent for us to proactively plan for DC fast charging stations, in particular in those kinds of locations. I guess I'll, I think I had something else to say about the charging, but yeah, that's it. I would be generally supportive of some sort of regulations of putting DC fast chargers in.
Well, and along that, I mean, I guess I wasn't sure. That's why I'm trying to get the sense from the commission. Our comp plan already has reference to encouraging EV charging. And an applicant, you know, will say, well, yes, we're dispensing gasoline, but we also have a couple of chargers. What is the feeling of the body about changing the provision based on our existing comp plan to say that any special use application must contain? Because, and I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe now it requires that they have EV charging. That's just something they could cite to as a benefit in seeking a special use?
Right. And in the proposal before you, I think the first one that required the SUP, they made a promise at the commission hearing to install the EV chargers, and then staff thought that was a great idea, so we carried it forward. That's where the second one came from.
All right. So what's the sense about whether our recommendation to city council could include a requirement that all special use applicants would have to install a certain number of EV chargers? Commissioner Kettner?
I'm good with that. I'm wondering, Mr. Rice, or somebody else, a couple of weeks ago with the applicant, was that, did that meet their EDM requirement when they did those?
We did not let them count that twice. So, no, it wasn't satisfying the...
Okay, so that's, because that's what I was going to say, is I didn't want it to be able to double dip. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yeah, I would support making that a requirement. I also would be curious if there was any support for making the 1,000 feet more than 1,000 feet. And I would also say that the first special use permit was one where Commissioner Kettner could imagine voting for it. Yeah.
I'm not a math person. 1,000 feet, what does that wind up being in blocks?
Not enough.
Not, yeah.
So if you use Vance and Teller over in Belmar, right? So you've got the oven pizza, I think, and it goes up, it used to be gas, I don't know what's on the corner, that block is 600 feet. The block from Teller to Salisbury, it's 300 or 400 feet, so it's less. So that one is a long block. Typical city block is somewhere between 4 on the low end, 500 is probably more of an average, and 6 starts to get a little long.
Okay. So just two blocks gets you to 1,000 feet. I too would support extending that distance. And I don't know if folks, I mean, it's really quite incredible to think that if you have a car and you're driving down the road, you can get two blocks pretty darn fast. Have to go four or six blocks to another gas station, does not seem like that unreasonable a requirement. Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I'll just say, some of the testimony we heard earlier about the, you know, exponential increase of harm due to the clustering of gas stations, it would seem to be good if we had more information, maybe it's in one of these papers I haven't read yet that we were handed out tonight. But if there is some information, you know, about, you know, how far apart do gas stations need to be to not have those effects of clustering, that would maybe provide an intelligent basis for us to decide how to increase the limit. And yeah, then conceptually increasing 1,000 feet between gas stations is something I'd also be comfortable with.
So just to summarize, on the issue of fueling stations, what I'm hearing is that we want to prepare a draft that will make publicly available on Lakewood speaks, that we as a commission would be able to look at and then be able to have public comment and our discussion that might include the following elements, that it would eliminate the ability to get a special use permit, it would eliminate the use of a fueling station in a mixed neighborhood or mixed, what was the, mixed general district, that the prohibition on one gas station being within 1,000 feet of another gas station, we would eliminate the reference to, unless there are certain traffic conditions that would justify it, and we'd also look to increase that distance. Third thing would be looking for a set distance from any residential area. And I don't know that we've talked about that. We heard 43 yards was certainly important, but it's, I think we've also, I've also seen a few things that indicated it might be better to have it even farther from that. So maybe I'll bring you a suggestion, and everyone will be free to make any changes, and we can take votes on that. And then finally, add as a land use requirement that any fueling station must have electric vehicle chargers required as a part of that approval. Anything else? Commissioner Kettner?
Yes, and also possibly requiring that any new ones, you know, it's really not, I don't see any different really than EV charger, requiring the higher type of, you know, anti-spillage. So we could at least put it in there. I don't see a reason we couldn't at least put it in there, and then see if city council feels they have to take it out.
And I apologize, Commissioner Buckley was pointing out something to me, and I definitely want to get back to that. But Jonathan Watel has raised his hand. I did not think that we had a way for folks who were watching on the Zoom to make comments. He is, of course, with the city.
Right.
Does he have an interest in providing some information to the commission?
Right. I sent him the link as a staff. Wasn't sure if he was going to be available this evening. And he offered to, I have to find the Zoom. Do you want him to participate?
Um, yes. If the commission is fine, I would reopen any comments that... reopen it for any comments that he might want to make.
Can I ask a quick point of order on that?
Certainly.
So, online, I mean, we advertised public comment tonight, and that has always been that it was a hybrid meeting. And that has generally meant that either Lakewood Speaks is open the whole time or they can, so that they can comment during the meeting or on Zoom. So for future meetings, I hope that we, I'm taking it by this conversation, by another public comment that neither of those, that if people wanted to comment during the meeting, the only option tonight was to be in person?
And that's, my understanding is what?
And based on that comment online, I don't think that was made clear to the public. Maybe in the future, we can either open it remotely during the meeting like it has been in the past or make it more clear that during the meeting is only in-person comment.
So we've gotten a little off track here, and I'd be happy to have this broader discussion. The, I think the agenda does clearly state that you can make any comment you want up to 5 o'clock of the day of the meeting, which that individual did do. And then I did not think that we had an opportunity for anyone to join on Zoom and make comments. If we do, then I would be happy to open that up for live public comments from anyone, but...
Right. The Zoom link is only sent to staff and the planning commission.
And why wouldn't that be sent, why wouldn't that be available to everyone?
There is a, so it's a different link to let people in to make comments. They're actually entering the meeting through Zoom, whereas the other one, it's regulated, and that takes a second person. That's why we do not offer the participation that they have at City Council, where you have call-in participation as well.
Okay. Well, based upon that explanation, I think we probably should skip Jonathan.
That's fine. That's fine.
Because I don't, if it's, I would like it to be available to everyone or not, and I thought it wasn't possible.
Right. It's staff only.
Okay.
So if a commissioner were traveling, the commissioner could participate online. If for some reason I weren't to be here, I could participate through Zoom as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Furman?
Two things, actually. One... My apologies. Technology's not always my friend. Two things. I would think that, and not to continue this argument, but if what he had to say is germane to like a answer to one of the staff questions or one of the things we were asking of staff, I would think that it would make sense to hear from him. If it's obviously a comment that's more in line with what a public comment was, I could understand the take. But that is secondary from my point of view for what I was going to talk about. But what I was going to talk about though is if we're talking about adding things that border on what might have been code, I would be interested in looking and making sure I understand whether or not we currently require some form of sand oil interceptor, whether it's going into sanitary sewer or storm sewer. Because that seems like, if we don't already have that and we're adding things, and I believe we can add things like that, that seems like an easy add to reduce pollution in and around gas stations, fueling stations, so.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yeah, I was just going to say what Commissioner Furman said about Mr. Wachtel. Because I think that it is a question we were asking of staff, I believe, and he's on our sustainability, whatever. So I was just seconding that sentiment, and that's all.
And I generally appreciate that, but this is, I think it's a fairness issue for the public. If we're going to say you have two choices, which are to do all the electronic comments you want up to 5 o'clock or come in person, I would invite any staff member to come to the commission meetings as well. But I'm hesitant to open it up for just some and not the public.
And I would agree with that. When I sent the link out to the commission today, I included Jonathan so that he could watch the meeting if you had something specific to ED. He and I actually had some conversation. What you don't know, we're getting a little off-topic. His group is working on EV standards right now. So if you wanted to invite him at a future date to provide some information on what he's looking at, he'd be more than happy to attend a meeting in the future.
And this, of course, is the dilemma for staff. Because if staff is not assisting us on City Council recommendations, then we will move forward and we'll make those recommendations as best as we see fit. Returning to Commissioner Kettner. We've had this conversation now a couple of times, so my response won't be a surprise to anyone. Our city charter says that we can make recommendations on land use matters. Our rules and regulations say we can make recommendations on land use matters. I don't think there's a prohibition on including non-land use matters in a resolution, but it's outside our lane. And if the issue is building codes, if the issue is some environmental issue not related to land use, I personally am less comfortable including them in resolutions. I'd like the resolution to be clean, if you'll pardon the pun, in the current environment. That was a second, that was a double. But that would be my suggestion, but as a reminder, I am just one vote. Did you have your light on again? Okay. Commissioner, no, yep. Okay. Now, moving to car washes. And car washes are tougher because we have not heard anything about car washes. Individual commissioners may have done some research. One of the things that struck me was that these are, it's a limited use in a mixed general, and it's a permitted use in three other districts. I am wondering, because of the concerns about water contamination and water usage, that perhaps these should be a special use permit in any district. And I would lean that direction myself. Curious if others have thoughts about whether car washes, because of their impact on the use of water and possible contamination. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. A couple of thoughts, similar to what Commissioner Furman just said at the end of our gas station discussion. Yeah, sand filter beds, anything to reduce the stormwater runoff contamination that we know is a very concentrated point source of pollution at car washes, strikes me as a very reasonable design requirement to add to our zoning code. A question from Mr. Rice. I perused through the car wash regs that we have right now. I believe that the limited use in the mixed-use general zone for car washes, I think the only limitation there is that it cannot be in a transit context. Is that correct or am I missing something?
Let me pull up the actual code. I believe you're correct is the limitation is it's not allowed in transit, but I'll check the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, that would be useful to know. I would agree with the suggestion that our chair made about special use permits for car washes in all zone districts where they can be built due to the environmental and pollution concerns. And maybe I would go further too and say that in a mixed-use urban context, they're also not appropriate and shouldn't be permitted under any circumstance. The rationale for that is that our mixed-use urban and mixed-use transit contexts are really trying to promote alternatives to the car for ways to get around. And a car wash is just about the most car-oriented land use I can imagine. It's more car-oriented than a gas station. You know, at least most gas stations have a convenience door that people can walk to. Nobody is ever going to walk to a car wash for any reason. So they're just not appropriate in places where we're trying to build walkable neighborhoods. And certainly, that's the intent of why we have the mixed-use urban and mixed-use transit zone designations. Thank you. Commissioner Furman?
I just wanted to say I share your interest in making these a special use permit. And again, this is another area where if they don't already have requirements for sand oil interceptors, I obviously think it, although here I would guess they must because of, I would think since car washes are enclosed, that potentially their drain may already go to sanitary. And if it's going to sanitary, certainly they must require sanitary. Again, I'm not a plumbing engineer, so I feel like I'm out of my lane a little bit on this, but if they don't already require it, if we can find a way to do so, it would be worth it.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, couple of thoughts. I remember hearing a long time back that more water is used if you wash your car at home versus going to a car wash, and that it's more efficient and that even some of the soaps and things that you use at home, those definitely go into the stormwater drains. Whereas car washes may, depending on how they're regulated, they can opt to use soaps and detergents that don't contain some of the chemicals. They also can have a water reclamation system and purification system. So I guess before I jump the gun on supporting something like this, I would want to understand and see some statistics and think about what we can do to further regulate. I probably like the idea of not too many within a certain distance, similar to the gas stations. We do tend to see a lot of car washes. I guess the special use permit is, I guess I would support that maybe with some of these added, looking at some of these added measures potentially as well. So be interested in some research and further information on that. Thanks.
I had, I'd actually had a conversation with someone from the city of Fort Collins that had a couple of ideas. One is LID, low-impact development. Whenever you have a water use, which is an obligation by the property owner bringing an application, has to demonstrate that they are on their site maintaining the same hydrology that existed previously and that they're not creating any runoff. So it's a lot of landscaping issues, it may be treatment issues, things like that. But that's one principle that they have in effect. Another that they were giving some thought to, perhaps our sustainability folks are, are gray water systems, where at a car wash, since it's not potable water, you could require use until exhaustion so that the water is reused and reused, it's captured and reused in a way that you're getting the most out of it rather than, you know, simply one and flush. I don't feel like I'm prepared to recommend things like that. Probably will not have a level of information that I feel comfortable in that, but I would love to see that as a part of the comprehensive plan, where we're looking at uses and benefiting or requiring uses to look at use to exhaustion as a principle. That might be one that we could apply. The other thing I was going to ask commissioners about is, very typical in the zoning context, the big issue, a big issue for car washes is noise concerns because they have those high-powered vacuums. And should those, does that make it inappropriate from, within a certain distance of resonance, for instance? So noise issues and potential additional setbacks are something that I ran across, but I don't know if others have thoughts about that. I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, I don't recall. We, I don't believe we had a requirement related to noise and car washes. Or did we?
The, Commissioner Buckley is correct about the limitation in the...
The limitation in the, Commissioner Buckley is correct about the limitation in the transit. And then there are five other criteria relating to car wash. It inadvertently tries to address the noise issue. If you look at 17763, it talks about the vacuum equipment and not a place adjacent to or face a residential district, right? That it probably doesn't go far enough. But that was one thing that in designing those standards, we didn't attempt to address that.
Okay. Well, I would just encourage everyone to maybe take a look at that and see if you think, and I may include in a draft for consideration, some tightening of those standards because I think those are traditional land use concerns that people may have. Other thoughts on car washes? Just to summarize, the draft for us to provide to the public and the commission would probably include eliminating the use in the mixed general, making it a special use in the remaining districts. And I understand that we may not all be ready to vote on that, but let's keep it on the agenda for discussion. Perhaps also a limitation to be a certain distance from other ones so we don't get a concentrated number of car washes all next to each other that I do think from a land use perspective would discourage other kinds of more integrated development. And then lastly, look at this issue of the impact of noise and the visual impact on neighboring residential districts. Anything I've forgotten? Commissioner O'Neill?
Maybe this is a staff question for Paul. Would it be possible to get a draft of where the sustainability crew is on the standards that they're coming up with for? I guess that's fueling stations, not this, isn't it? They're not doing car washes?
Right, they're not doing car washes, and they're not doing liquid fueling stations. They're looking at EV specifically.
Okay, never mind, scratch that.
Terrific. Anything else on this issue before we move on to item four? And again, great appreciation for the folks that came in and provided us with information. That's been very, very beneficial to us. Thank you. Moving on to item four. This is another request from council where they are seeking recommendations. This is the first time that it's on our agenda. I think this is obviously a very important issue that we need to spend time on. The issue, I'll just read it from, that was sent again by council. "In response to some of the gaps in our processes made clear by the project at 777 South Yarrow, I'd like to send two items for study to the planning commission to bring back to council with recommendations. One, I would like the planning commission to study and provide recommendations for a proactive community engagement process as part of the large site plan pre-planning process." I think the correct term is major site plan, but we're assuming that's what council meant. And then secondly, "I'd like the planning commission to study and provide recommendations for potential park-adjacent overlay guidelines such as bulk planes, setbacks, et cetera." So the first thing we're going to do, and again, just a reminder for commission, I'd like to do this one just like the previous three, where this is our kickoff to have preliminary discussion. At the next meeting, hopefully, we're going to get some community comments. And then we'd have a discussion based upon this meeting, that meeting, the comments about a potential draft. And then we'd make that draft available at the subsequent meeting and be in a position, hopefully, to take some action. So with that, I'll open up the public discussion. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments on this council request for recommendations? I don't think we have anyone from the public who does. So we'll close that and we'll move on to commissioner discussion. And I have thoughts, but I invite others. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. I do think that the timing for this kind of discussion is good in that we are, of course, going through the comprehensive plan process. And, you know, we heard a couple of meetings ago here that, you know, staff is going to be sending some survey postcards out to nearly every address in Lakewood, I believe. You know, that's a very good proactive community engagement exercise. You know, there's a sad dilemma in a lot of land use things. The best time to get the sense of the community of what the vision is and what folks want... the vision is, and what folks want, and where they want it, is when you're doing things like making comprehensive plans, or when you're making plans for a corridor or an area. You know, oftentimes, by the time a project is proposed, it's not necessarily too late, but many times it is kind of too late, right? If it's a rezoning or a special use, then no, certainly it's not too late. But if someone's proposing something that's completely within the property rights that the land is already entitled to, you know, just legally, it is very difficult for, for any public body to go claw that back. And so, you know, the best way to do proactive public engagement is, you know, exactly the comp plan process we're doing. And so just, you know, thoughts on that? You know, maybe I didn't say this strongly enough when we were talking to staff about the comp plan update. You know, they want to do a 15-year update, you know, thinking about it more after that meeting. A 10-year update, or even, you know, a 10-year plan, but with intentional, you know, major looks every five years, provides like more frequent intervals for that kind of proactive look at what land use ought to be at the stage when it's more effective. You know, I said at the outset of these comments that there's a little bit of a dilemma in that, in that the reality, too, is that what really riles people up and gets people interested in a particular land use matter is when something is proposed near them they don't like. And that happens a long time after the planning process that leads to the zoning entitlements, that leads to the proposal of a specific project, you know, occurs. And so I don't know the trick, other than to encourage anyone who's, you know, here tonight and watching us on Lakewood Speaks, you know, get involved in the comprehensive plan, and speak out early when the comments can be most effective. I don't know if that's exactly what council was asking for us, but I mean, that is probably your highest lever of effectiveness. I'll certainly listen to other commissioners, though, for ideas.
Commissioner Kettner?
Thank you. And so what I sort of did was, and I think that this is what you're asking for tonight, is just kind of a general list of ideas that then we're going to discuss next time?
Whatever comments any commissioner would like to give, sure.
Is that the process, though, that we're going on, is we'll have a next meeting after this to discuss the ideas that we're throwing out tonight?
Yes.
I thought that's what I heard you kind of describe the process. Okay. So a couple of things that I think we could look at is eliminating the discrepancy between major and minor subdivisions and plaits, and going with the charter requirement that the planning commission shall make recommendations on those. That would get the public involved earlier in a lot of these land use decisions, and be consistent with our charter. We could, wait. We're only on number one, right? Now number two?
Yeah, and just as a reminder, number one, they're asking for recommendations on major site plans, not on subdivisions.
Great, but it also says involving the community with pre-planning process, right? And getting them involved earlier. Proactive community engagement process. And before you do your major site plan, you have a subdivision, you know, a lot of times that was done years ago and wouldn't affect it now. I think it would be worth a discussion, because it would be proactive community engagement. And before that time when Commissioner Buckley was talking about where it feels too late, even if it's not too late, it feels that way. Another thing I think that we could discuss would be eliminating the discretionary items. There are, there are not many entitlements, actually, because we have so many discretionary items. And so going through and eliminating them, one of them was just brought to our attention by some people, it's been brought to our attention before, but we just all received an email about yesterday or the day before, and that is the fee-in lieu. I cannot say this strongly enough. Nobody, nobody is entitled to buy their way out of our land requirements. And when we have fees and lose being accepted for every single project, we are practically selling our parkland. When we have a law that says, when you add 1,000 people to our city, you, we have to add five and a half acres of parkland. So I think that that would be a great discussion, and I would like to give credit, you know, to Mary Ann Nagel and the community members who have been working on this for years, and have a real solid proposal that we, that they have sent to us, that we could use as a basis for discussion. And then one other, two, well, these two go site, these, the last ideas sort of two that go side by side. The planning director from Golden spoke with us a few years ago, and let us know that in Golden, their major site plan, their site plans, I don't know that we would even call it a major one, if they're adding three or more residential units, they have a public hearing before approval. Especially in light of the fact that the zoning ordinance that went in effect in 2013 took out our density limits, and the land dedication ordinance that was supposed to safeguard some of that, people have been buying out of, as was mentioned. I think it would be appropriate to look at what other communities around us, near us, do, and how they have major site plan approval, either by planning commission or by city council. In our case, I would strongly suggest city council. Our voters in 2019 said they want projects of 40 units or more to have a hearing before council. So we could also look at amending 14.27, which also already requires public hearings for major site plan, and simply eliminating the limit as to the number of allocations. We already have a law that says we're supposed to have projects of 40 units or more come before us, but we have way too many exemptions and exceptions for that. So we could look at following it, and eliminating the exemptions and exceptions, and eliminating the 1% cap, which would bring it in line with the state law. So those are either four or five things, I think, that would help with that. Proactive community engagement for our large site plans. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you. I think that the comprehensive plan is a great place for folks to start to get involved in sort of the language of what we're talking about and the vision for the city. But I would say, once a site plan goes to, out for referral, and comments are received back from different agencies and within the city, and the comments have been picked up, might be a good time for community engagement, because at that point, we know, usually, I think, that they're not going to just go away, that they're not going to get the referral comments back and say, we don't want to develop in Lakewood. But at that point, it seems like maybe a more viable project, that then would allow for meaningful feedback from community members to a meaningful project that's got some legs, but is certainly far from complete. So I think that, to me, makes logical sense. I'd be curious of others' thoughts on that.
Commissioner Furman?
This is sort of a comment and a question to Mr. Rice. So when a major site plan is coming to your group, the review you're giving it typically, right, is essentially the review against the current zoning requirements, and assuming a major site plan that is submitted without a variance, that meets the zoning requirements, and it already has that existing zone, what standards would exist that you would have to provide? I mean, if it met in all ways the zoning, what standard would you be able to use to deny a major site plan is submitted?
To deny?
Yeah, I mean, is it, exactly.
Right, so by right use from zoning, if it was a standalone residential project, we would use Articles 4, 5, 6, and I believe 8 and 9. So essentially, we look at the design standards specific to residential development. Parking, Article 4 is use. Article 5 is basic dimensional standards, height, setbacks, densities, things like that. Article 6 is a design standard. 8 and 9, I can't keep them in order in my head. One is sign standards, and the other one is parking standards. Oh, and I forgot, Article 13, which is the enhanced development menu. So all of those would apply. If you move to a commercial, or you have a mix of residential commercial, 6 swaps for 7. So that's where the design. And when I say design, the aesthetic appeal, not the dimensional standards of what's, what will fit on the lot.
And I guess what I'm getting at is, assuming at this stage, my, major site plan, a project meets all of the ordinance, or all the articles, there isn't something to necessarily deny it. There isn't an arbitrary denial.
Standard, no.
Yeah, and the reason I mention this is only because I, as we look at ways for community engagement, I would hope that if we're trying to find that, it would be meaningful, and the challenge is, at the stage of a major site plan, it either meets the requirements, or it doesn't. So I am, I don't know, I'm, I'm not saying it isn't possible, but I would be curious about what that community engagement's outcome is. Because if, if it doesn't meet the requirements already, then it goes back for comments, people have to revise it. Or if it does, it's approved. And that's where I tend to lean towards, again, the idea that the comprehensive plan earlier on is the best time for the engagement, because it's the time to make the changes to the standards that these things are going to need to meet, whether it's commercial or residential, rather than coming in later, and assuming that we can arbitrarily make decisions because we don't like something. And that's my concern about the idea of, at that stage, having community engagement. I think doing it now, at the conference and plan is the time to do it, later feels like a dangerous precedent.
Commissioner O'Neill?
I totally see the comprehensive plan engagement as an important role in that conversation. However, I think it gets a little abstract when it comes to specific plots of land, specific locations. So I do think there needs to be, and there's a dance that, you know, planning is doing, between the developer and what's approved and what isn't, what, what's negotiated, even in a use-by-right. There's a conversation happening. So I think the perception at this point to the public is that this is all secretive. And I think the only way to speak to that, and allow the public to have some negotiating voice, whether it can be implemented or not, is important. And I think it would alleviate quite a lot of some of the dysfunction we are seeing within the city now, when it comes to major site developments, and feeling helpless to the process. That, I'm not saying, I do see the danger that Commissioner Furman is referring to, because there can be also confusion around what can be implemented, and what is legal, and what is not legal. And I think it is a slippery slope, but I think avoiding the conversation has not been helpful at this point.
And, and I'll make the comment that, as everyone knows from, you know, my brief time on the commission, transparency is absolutely paramount. We have to find ways for people not to feel excluded from the process. And if, you know, we have meetings and no one shows up, well, then that's their choice, too. But I do like the idea of earlier transparency. But I think to Commissioner Furman's point, it's a really good one about, and Commissioner O'Neill, you mentioned this as well, what is the planning department doing? Because when the public sees a project go forward, they're thinking, the planning department is supporting every project that a developer brings in. And of course, the reality is the exact opposite. The vast majority of them are killed before that, through discussion. They, the property owner, the developer, is made to understand that that project's not going to fly. So we don't want to shift to a point where the public is forced to react to a lot of projects that are going to die anyway. We certainly don't want to use staff time on that. So that's a balance that I think we have to take into consideration. So that's what I'm struggling with, is how do we make it more transparent without wasting everybody's time on projects that aren't moving forward? Commissioner Kettner?
Well, I can't help with that lead, and it's not a waste of time to do things right to begin with. I wanted to mention another thing, though, to bring up for next week. It's come up before, and came up recently, too, to look at our website, and look at the county's website. We don't have transparency in our land use, and we always say, oh, the projects are up there. But compared to, especially, I mean, the county, I have more of a reason to look at. But the other municipalities I've looked at, and, you know, the county, you click on a project, and you can open up the file, and you can see all, everything. And I would think that would actually, in the long run, maybe save staff time, you know, fewer questions, if everything was just out there for people to, to see. So maybe we could look at suggesting some changes along that. And I know that's not a land use thing to suggest.
Commissioner Furman?
And as far, oh, I had a couple more things. Neighborhood outreach. You mentioned it, people coming. Most people don't know that we were talking about these things, you know, they're busy and all. But guess what? The people that you outreach to, a lot of them did show up. It would be nice if maybe we could do a little more neighborhood outreach, even on these meetings, and maybe just send a quick email to the registered neighborhood leaders when we're discussing these in the future. And then I think it is important, I wanted to mention, and I can't remember what was said, that I wanted to mention this, but Westward published an article last week or two, that said that Tedford Properties came to the city and offered the land that is adjacent to, to Belmar Park, to the city, and the city wasn't interested. But funny thing, the city is supposed to be the city council. So I think this fact that things feel not transparent is because they haven't been transparent. And I think, I just can't say the more transparency, the better, and I don't think it's a bad thing to let people know about projects, even if they're going to die. Thank you.
Commissioner Furman?
To carry on for a moment, what I was saying before, the point I was making, which is to say that I'm not sure what that engagement looks like, given that there are, I mean, I realize there's somewhat of a negotiated dance, but for the most part, they're following a set of rules, and either the projects meet that, or they don't. However, in that effort towards transparency, I, again, totally outside of our lane, but I don't disagree with Commissioner Kettner's idea that you could take the planning dashboard, someone could, if this is only a recommendation to council, anyway, but the point is, someone could theoretically provide more information on the planning dashboard. Because the cases exist, people can look up cases, but you're right, they can't see what they look like. If community engagement is merely making people aware, then sure, there's probably ways to improve that, and I think that would be worthwhile, if that satisfies people's need to understand what's happening. But again, I, I am inclined to believe at that stage, you're mostly following a set of rules. There may be some negotiation, but it's not, I would think that if the planners are at a place where they're going way outside of those standards, it would need to be a variance, anyway, that the person applying would need to apply for, or would need to receive before going forward. So like I said, it's not that I'm opposed to the idea of the community engagement, it's more of, I'm not sure what that looks like. But if transparency is what it looks like, then yeah, I myself would think it would be great if people could go to the dashboard and see more than merely what the particular project details are in narrative fashion.
Well, so I think we've got a lot of thinking to do, in terms of what additional engagement might look like, to whom, and at what point. And then let's go on to the second request, which is wanting the planning commission to study and provide recommendations for potential park-adjacent overlay guidelines, such as bulk planes, setbacks, et cetera. And again, this will be on the agenda for our next Um, and again, this will be on the agenda for our next meeting as well, and hopefully we'll get, uh, a bunch of comments on that. Um, but any preliminary reaction or thoughts that folks have? Commissioner Kettner.
I think underlying zoning has been, um, consternation for our community a lot. So, I think that just talking about underlying zoning kind of also deals with overlay. And currently, all of our parks and open space have underlying zoning. Um, this happened, starting again in 2013, so I think we should, um, look at whether underlying zoning of our parks is appropriate, or we should, um, perhaps have, um, parks and open space standards, which could include some of those things that are mentioned here. In addition, the conversation that I mentioned around the fee in lieu for parkland would take care of a lot of what is mentioned in, this is Counselor Stewart, I think, recommendation, whoever made the recommendation number two. Thank you.
Any other preliminary thoughts? Um, I will just make one, which, uh, I was struck by, um, a comment that, um, Counselor Cruz made. She also had asked us to give some thought to equity issues. Parkland is one of those where, uh, those of us that live in certain parts of the city do not have as much parkland as some that live in other parts of the city. Um, so, um, we should also be taking into consideration, um, how any additional restrictions we place on property adjacent to parkland affects, uh, different parts of the city as well. Commissioner Kettner.
Well, I was going to bring this up at the next meeting, but I, as long as you mentioned it, I will. A hundred percent, oh, Dr. Elizabeth left, she's really good at this one. Um, yeah, environmental equity and, um, what's the other word I'm looking for? Equality. You know what? Poor kids deserve parks and open space, too. And, um, it has been documented that the lower income levels, we're less healthy, and we live longer, and the air is not as clean to breathe. Um, so, when we look at those requirements about the fee in lieu of the open space, I hope we also talk about eliminating, um, the option that you don't have to provide open space if you are doing affordable housing. Affordable housing is great, but poor people deserve open space and clean air to breathe, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Gribliannis.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Kettner. In terms of, you know, the, having equitable access to parks, I find myself kind of conflicted with the idea of preserving park space and park views and the, you know, potential densification of park perimeters. Um, the idea of being able to provide more access to these recreational opportunities to a larger group of people from more of a pedestrian experience. I think, you know, that can be viewed as a benefit. The negative of that is, larger structures adjacent to park space, that could be obstructing previously available views. Um, so, there's just a little bit of, uh, I guess, internal conflict when it comes to that. Um, and I guess I'll just leave it there for now.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, one thing, obviously, we talk about a lot is, you know, the, the need for more housing and, and where we put the housing, what are the best places for it? Um, and just, to be frank, from personal experience, from, you know, talking to people who have lived in, you know, apartments or condos for a long time, you know, a drawback is that you don't have a yard, like people who maybe have a, a detached, single-family home does. And so, you know, multifamily housing near parks is a lot more attractive than multifamily housing, uh, not near parks. For that exact reason, you get the outdoors, you get, you get some open space nearby you. You, it's maybe better than having a lawn in a single-family home. You, you don't have to maintain it yourself. It's just, uh, it's an open space that's, that's there for you. So, in that regard, is, there's kind of a dual process here, something to think about. Um, you know, we should probably be building, in my view, a lot more density next to existing parks, and we should be building a lot more new parks next to places where we're putting new high-density. Um, you know, they, they complement each other. Um, and, and so, there's, there's ways to do that. There's, you know, what's the zoning next to parks? Um, and so, in that respect, um, you know, some of the, the specific wording of the request, you know, recommendations for park-adjacent overlay guidelines, bulk planes, setback, et cetera. Um, you know, my thought would just be, in that regard, uh, this is not very fleshed out, it's, it's still very high-level, but, um, our requirements for setbacks don't say much about what goes in the setbacks, just what isn't in the setbacks, right? Generally, you can't put a building in the setback. You can't put a, you know, in, in, in some cases, like a parking lot or something, in a, in a setback. Um, you know, I think maybe adjacent to a park for any zone district, there's, um, there's a good rationale to maybe, you know, put some more meat in our zoning code about what does go in the zoning, in, in the setback. Not just, you know, uh, whatever random, um, bushes or trees or shrubs that the landscape architect can come up with to, um, you know, satisfy the landscaping requirements and the zoning ordinance, but something that's really designed in an intentional way to, um, you know, uh, enhance the park area and, and just kind of make the park realm continue into, uh, the property being developed, so that, you know, the perimeter of that property being developed, you know, um, is, is in a meaningful way enhancing the park and, um, you know, not just merely having an absence of stuff, like a setback usually implies, but actually a, you know, a presence of something that, you know, enhances the parking experience, and it would probably improve the quality of the development, too. Um, you know, and likewise, if, if we're going to talk about parkland dedication and fees in lieu of that, um, well, first of all, I'm pretty sure that's not in the zoning code. Um, and I, I generally do have sympathy for Chair Kolkmeier's point of view, that we generally want to stick to our lane, but yeah, I also, you know, we, we can, I, I'm okay also making recommendations to city council that they, they do a thing outside the zoning code, but that's usually about as far as I feel comfortable doing. So, if, if you want to look at, you know, uh, park fee in lieu, um, great, but, uh, you know, maybe more to that, that something we could put in zoning is, if there is a new park, you know, being built, you know, next to a new development, either because it is going to be dedicated, uh, to the city, or because it's a fee in lieu, and maybe the city uses some of that fee in lieu money to purchase parkland in, you know, the neighborhood or vicinity of where there's been a lot of development, which is, you know, a purpose of why the fee in lieu exists as well. Um, you know, what kind of, um, what, what kind of requirements can we put on that to, um, to make that really integrate with and, uh, complement, uh, the development? Um, you know, some public park development is, is maybe entirely public processes and control. The city, the city owns the park. Um, but, you know, maybe there's opportunities if, uh, you know, a, a developer is giving a big fee in lieu, or the developer is giving land, in either case, and it, it gives rise to a park nearby development, um, you know. Uh, what can the zoning code say that, you know, the developer can contribute to, um, the park and the public realm that, um, you know, that is a benefit for everyone, you know, for the existing neighbors and for the new part, and the, the, the new project and, and making the park fit in with the neighborhood? I, I think that those are kinds of appropriate things that, uh, that we could look at. You know, a lot of that's still kind of high-level and fuzzy. I don't have specific ideas, but those are the kinds of ideas that I think we should be looking at with regards to, uh, parks and residential development in general.
Any other thoughts? Um, and again, this will be posted, uh, for public comment and our discussion at our next meeting. I think we are ready for, uh, item five, other legislative matters. So, as you will recall, uh, we did pass a resolution, um, on affordable ownership that was sent to the, uh, city council. Um, and there was one provision in there, in that resolution, that we, um, wanted to provide, um, do a little further work on, and that was the one having to do with potential new district, R1X, R10, um, that has a minimum lot size. So, uh, that's why this is on our agenda, to see if, uh, what we would like to do, um, on this. Mr. Rice had provided some work that was done by their intern already, um, that provided, uh, information on what an R10 district might look like, what the, uh, some of the setbacks, um, and other, uh, bulk, uh, limitations might be. Um, and also had a summary sheet that had some information on other jurisdictions. I will first note that, uh, I don't understand why your staffer wasn't able to come up with a particular issue on Bs. Uh, Bs were left unanswered in the draft. So, a small lot may or may not be allowed to have Bs. But other than that, um, the draft did give us a starting point, um, to look at. So, the question for, uh, the commission is, uh, we said to city council that we may want to provide them more specifics on an additional, uh, zoning district that has a lower or no minimum lot size. We have a template that has been provided to us. What is the will of the commission?
Commissioner Buckley.
I had one question when I was reviewing this. I'm trying to bring it up here on my computer right now. I'm not finding it, but I, I think there was, um, you know, one of the, uh, one of the use tables, uh, was indicating that, uh, you know, possibly a change in dimensional standards, you know, based on if this is a small lot that, um, just has a single dwelling unit on it, or if it's, you know, intended to provide like a, a cottage, a style development, maybe, um, multiple, uh, is, single-family detached homes, um, on a larger lot with, um, yeah, some sort of comments based, you know, designed into it. Um, that, that was my interpretation of like the, the differing dimensional standards we saw in there. Um, and I was just wondering, a question from Mr. Rice, that, you know, there was no real explanation or text added anywhere to the zone district that, um, explained those dual standards or rationale for such. Um, and I just thought maybe the, the draft that we have, which is a very good start, would probably benefit from some sort of elaboration like that. Um, I, I don't know if you have anything more to say on that, Mr. Rice, or if, if you would agree that's necessary, or, or what the intent of those dueling dimensional standards is.
The, the zero slash three. So, essentially, um, uh, it, it was left to the commission, right? So, I, I gave Avery some broad direction to, to put something together, and he would ask me that question, and I, response was, it's commission discussion. The zero-three rationale, um, comes back, one of the things staff looked at, uh, some of the setbacks, um, in the districts, they can go to zero feet, right? So, you come, when, when you're at zero, then building code comes in, you limit penetrations and so forth. So, the question was, do we let a building go to, uh, nine tenths of a foot? Do we let it go to a foot and a half? So, it's, it's one or the other. You either are at the property line and the, the, the code comes in to comply, or you have a setback. Uh, whether you agree with that or not is, is up to the commission, but that was the staff rationale. It's one or the other, not, uh, this number in between that then, you know, we've got to go to the building code to make the interpretation.
I, I see. So, the intent of that was like the, the setback is a, a minimum of three, and it could be greater, um, or it is exactly zero, but it will never be a number that's greater than zero and less than three?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
So, I guess I would suggest there's a threshold question for the commission. Um, I think a, a, um, good argument can be made for either of two paths. One path is, you know, when we're talking about new zone districts, the ability to, uh, come up with the district, to make all these changes, get it to city council, it's approved, and then a mapping attempt happens. We are looking at essentially when the comp plan process, um, would already be taking that into consideration. So, I, that is a compelling argument for holding off on this entirely until, or doing it, rather, as a part of the comprehensive plan. I lean that direction. But, the other path is one that, that I, commissioners may support, which is that this is a concept, and we want that concept out there, and we want, uh, city council to give it some consideration, and we have some suggestions about how smaller lot sizes, uh, might be good from a planning perspective. I really see those two as kind of two different paths. Um, and Commissioner Peters.
So, in the first path, where we wait until the comprehensive plan, it would include a mapping effort, is what I heard you say. Is that correct?
Well, I don't want to speak for, um, the planning staff that are working on the comprehensive plan, but as they described to us, um, they have a community engagement process that we're going to be very heavily involved in throughout the summer. The goal is to try to have the comp plan start to come together by the end of the year, and, um, uh, I, I think the planning department's hope is that actual zoning code changes could, um, come shortly thereafter. Um, so, that's, that's one path, kind of integrating this discussion in our involvement in the comp plan.
I lean towards that because it gives an opportunity for feedback from, um, residents, um, and I think that's important for us to have that outreach and that input. I think it's also important to understand on the map where this zoning change might actually occur. Um, I think that's something else that affects residents and is important for folks to have, um, insight into and, and visibility into, in particular. And I think for my assessment and evaluation of it, understanding where it would be located and how it would be used is, um, and specifically, is very helpful.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Uh, in terms of how to go forward, I'm just going to go back and recall the resolution we passed unanimously, uh, on December sixth, and just read two parts of that. Um, you know, two of the findings we said, we said were, uh, B, the liquid zoning ordinance should be amended to create a new zone district that eliminates minimum lot size requirements for single-family homes. Um, that's what we're working on right now, and that the planning commission will continue to work on drafting language to recommend to city council changes of zoning ordinance, creating the zone district. That's also what we're talking about doing right now. Um, and should the city council create this new zone district after being enacted, it could potentially be utilized by any party who requests rezoning for it, so that, that's of immediate effect. It could be as soon as city council passes it, which could be within this year easily. Um, and then number C, or letter C came after that, uh, the comprehensive plan effort that is now underway should consider vacant, underutilized, or undeveloped locations of the city where it may be appropriate, to legislatively map this new zone district with no minimum lot size for single-family homes. Um, and so, that, that does exactly, I think, what Commissioner Peters was just saying. It, it gives us the benefits of a public engagement process for, uh, determining the much more difficult question in my mind of where to map this. The concept that it should exist, I think, is something that we have broad consensus on this, uh, commission for, based on our many discussions about this last year. So, let's just, you know, make it exist, and, uh, the question of where to map it, um, you know, will benefit from, uh, a professional, uh, touch of, of staff and, uh, the engagement that is a, a natural, built-in part of the, um, comprehensive plan, and, uh, we'll come out with an answer in, um, you know, maybe not a, as quick as we like, but still, pretty soon. I think that's, that's the process for moving forward that I support and am very comfortable with.
Commissioner Kettner.
I'm comfortable in waiting on this. I really see it, the, the mapping part as being really, this is, I would hope that we do not want to do this in our R1 districts where we already have, um, a lot of ownership opportunities, and we have the product that is most in demand. I see this as being mostly in our mixed-use districts, um, and I believe it's already allowed in one, and we already made this suggestion that it be allowed in another. Is there anything right now, Mr. Rice, any applicant that would be using, wanting to use an R10 coming up in the next few months?
Not that, uh... Not that I'm aware at this time.
And I think we said this before, if somebody did want to do something like an R10, um, before it exists, they could ask for like, uh, um, planned development zoning.
They could, uh, request, uh, a planned development or a text amendment.
To have, uh, to do what they want. So, there is an option, um, for that development if we wait, um, as the chair is suggesting. Thank you.
Well, as I said, there is compelling arguments on both sides. Well, as I said, there's compelling arguments on both sides. So I guess I'm curious whether we want to have a particular motion as to how to proceed, and I could envision that one motion would be that we set this for the next meeting to specifically make recommendations on the creation of the district and all of the related limitations for that district as a recommendation to council. And alternative to that would be to engage on this issue as a part of the comprehensive plan, rather than specifically moving it prior to that. But I think both positions have been well articulated.
Would you like some sort of motion for?
I do.
Sure, I'll move that we set this draft, draft language for creating an R10 district for a public hearing at our next regular planning commission meeting, where we can get more public comment on the draft and make amendments, and if we so choose, pass a resolution recommending its adoption to city council.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I guess I have a question.
Commissioner Kettner.
I thought we had it on, we didn't have a public hearing. Is this one on the agenda as a public hearing tonight?
This issue has been on our, yeah, it's on the agenda, and it has been on our agenda a number of times in the past.
Right, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was also on there tonight. Okay. Thank you. I thought it was.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Yeah, just clarifying to Commissioner's point, yeah, absolutely, this is a public hearing on it tonight. As we have all seen live in real time, no one's come out to talk to it, so, yeah, having another opportunity for people to speak to it before we vote on it is, I think, appropriate. But we have talked about it quite a lot, and so I would hope that this motion I made would motivate us to some action where we can take an action to pass a resolution and put this to bed at the next meeting. That would be my hope, for sure.
Any further discussion? So a yes vote would be to have this on our next agenda for developing a specific proposal to send to city council on R10 or R1X. And a no vote, the implication is that it should be a part of the comprehensive plan process. Go ahead and vote. Uh-oh. Wait a minute. Display vote. Start voting. I got to hit a button. There we go. Everyone in? So that motion does fail. So I think at this point, the will, though narrowly, is that we integrate this into the comprehensive plan process. That is it for item five. Item six, upcoming meeting calendar. Mr. Rice is always very good about laying out what the calendar is going to be because we have a lot of technology supports. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kettner, did you want?
I think it sort of was on the last item I had written down. When will we be discussing, because I thought at our last meeting, part of the list of six items, that last item, was the one that I had suggested about preserve, and I had some suggestions for that, but then it didn't show up on the agenda, for preserving existing ownership opportunities?
Yes, so that's G in the resolution, and the language that passed was, the city council, it says, "The city council may task the planning commission to look at ways to preserve naturally occurring ownership units."
And I thought at our last meeting, you said that that came back to us also. It did not?
I don't believe it does. I'm just, I don't believe it does.
Okay. Commissioner Peters, we'll check into that, because another commissioner, I think, thought that also.
Well, I'm, and if I said something wrong, I apologize. I'm just, based upon the resolution that was passed, that was one that is included in this, right, as a recommendation to city council? But I think the plain language is that city council has to ask us to do that.
So they asked us to come back with what, it's the same as the R10? So how is it different than the R10?
I guess I would invite everyone to read what we voted on and passed, and if there's a different interpretation than I have, I'd be happy to hear it, but it says, G, "The city council may task the planning," so that's featured.
And I thought at the last meeting that you had said that they did task us with that.
Not that I'm aware of. I've only seen the request for recommendations that we've received. You still have questions?
I am, so is Commissioner Peters.
What is, what is your?
Maybe she can better explain it.
Okay.
I guess I thought. I guess I thought that it was part of the whole package that was passed and that it came back. I mean, that's what I had remembered, but.
Without question, it was in the resolution.
Right.
But we've, the way it was phrased, which did get, I think, unanimous support, was that that was one that was different than the one that we just discussed. The one that we just discussed, the language was, "We will continue to work," whereas G was, "The city council may task the planning."
Can we take a look at the resolution?
Yeah, it's right on Liquid Speaks.
Yeah, let's just look at it real quick.
I don't doubt that that's the language, however, the intent was that we would have specifics on that. Could we please add that as a discussion item so that we can come up with some specifics on that?
Oh, it's over here.
Did you want another moment to?
No, I'm done. I just wanted to look at it and.
Upcoming meeting calendar, item six.
Thank you, and I added this as a specific item, just so the commission kind of had the dates that were upcoming. If you want me to go through them all again, I can. The one date I wanted to specifically draw attention to the commission is June 19th is a city holiday, so there's an alternative date proposed of June 12th. As we get into April, maybe even the 1st of May, I'll plan the calendar out for another three to four months and just keep the commission updated on where we're at during the calendar year, so you can plan accordingly. I just wanted to bring that up, that I'll continue to do that throughout the year. I might not necessarily agenda it, but in your emails and so forth that you are receiving from me, you'll get a kind of a revised calendar that gives you, that looks a couple months out.
What was the alternative date to the 19th?
To June 19th is June 12th.
12th, thank you.
So we are on pace to only have one meeting in February, and that's going to be a busy meeting because we will be looking at draft recommendations on fueling stations and car washes. We will also be inviting comments on the two council requests that we got on earlier community engagement and parks, but we do not have any applications expected in February, right, Mr. Rice?
That is correct.
Turning to general business, we are almost done. I wanted to mention that I will, I do plan to bring a draft resolution on what may seem like a small change to the rules and regulations for the board, but it's one that I think is important. Our current rules and regulations only provide for individuals in quasi-judicial proceedings to be sworn. It is typical, and has been for more than a century, to allow individuals to either swear or affirm. There are theological reasons, there are philosophical reasons. I, myself, do not swear oaths. I affirm that I will be truthful. So that is a provision that I would like to add into our rules and regulations, so I just wanted to alert you that you'll see that, and it'll be posted on Liquid Speaks before we deal with it. Hopefully, that will be a non-controversial item. Anyone else have anything in general business? Commissioner Peters.
As of right now, I may not be available for the meeting on the 21st, but that may change. I'm on a flight back from Spain at that time, so, but it may change, so, yeah.
Anyone else under general business? Well, thank you all so much. I think we accomplished a lot tonight. We will adjourn the planning commission at 9:17.